Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the school board of Palmyra Eagle to order at 7:05. Can we have a little call?
Doris Parsons.
Here.
Jean Reed.
Here.
Michael Eddy.
Here.
Mitzi Rozeski.
Here.
Tara Leroy.
Here.
Zachary Rukowski.
Here.
Kristiana Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum. I'll read the district mission statement. "To ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual." Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I have a suggestion for an addition to the agenda on number 200%. I'd like to add a resignation.
Jean, is there?
Oh, sorry. Tess?
Okay.
I'd like to add an addition to the agenda under item two. On the consent agenda. Under C, resignations and retirements, I would like to add a resignation for the district administrator.
Is there a second to that change?
A second.
Any other changes or additions?
I would move the, I would like to suggest that we remove action items 11D and E.
Do you want to move to table them?
Yeah, let's table them.
Is there a second for that?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Could we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I have some room. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Doris, if that's supposed to be live for people, it's not live for people.
We think we have the thing going now.
Is that anything supposed to be live for people or not?
Zach and Charlotte.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna say it's not. Sorry.
Okay. Public comment. Do we have any public comment? I don't have any down here. Okay. Moving on to board monitoring. Board monitoring A is just an awesome thing. I have this lapel in front of me. It's not mine. It's for Tara Leroy. She was actually, she was voted the changemaker of the year for 2020 to the state senate. Yeah, it's a beautiful award. We've got a person streaming in right now that's gonna explain a little bit more about the organization and why Tara so worthily received it. So we'll do that right now. Jenny, you're on.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. My name is Jenny Kachalde, and I'm the Southeast Regional Organizer with the Wisconsin Public Education Network. Let me begin by saying a little bit about the Wisconsin Public Education Network. We're an informal, nonpartisan alliance of parents, educators, board members, administrators, and school districts all over the state of Wisconsin who are committed to public schools that ensure that every child has an equal opportunity to learn and succeed in the classroom and beyond. We work together to share information, ideas, and actions that help us get better at state and local level goal meetings. Our partners don't always agree on every issue or policy, but our common ground is always rooted in a deep commitment to the success of every student in the state. We invite folks to check it out at wisconsinetwork.org to learn a little bit more. All that said, our network bestows just one annual award. That is our changemaker of the year. The award recipient is determined via a statewide nomination process, and I'm still very thrilled to say that Palmyra Eagle's very own Tara Leroy received the 2020 Wisconsin Public Education Network Changemaker Award. Tara received her very own last apple I made she has there with her tonight during our summer summit on Friday, July 24. The following is just a portion of the nomination letter that Kami Chesney and Chase Grumman submitted to our nomination committee. Tara's a board leader. When our school district was facing dissolution, Tara would not accept that. She rounded people to get out and vote during the referendum. And although the referendum failed, she never gave up. She gathered other supporters to go around and petition to gain signatures for special education, for the special election. She was successful in this battle. Although the numbers did not come out the way we wanted, she kept fighting. She was very active and present at DPI meetings. She encouraged supporters to speak and write emails to DPI. She did an amazing job. Numerous people spoke on behalf of our schools, the district, and our students. She faced so many challenges along the way, including a group of citizens who were against our district remaining silent. They were very vocal and very negative, and they attacked her personally. But this did not stop her. She dug her heels, and she fought much harder. Tara is one of the reasons our district remains open. If that weren't enough, she was elected to a seat on this school board. Tara deserves this award more than anyone I know. She is a fantastic role model for everyone around her, especially the students she fought so hard for. So I just want to thank Kami for those words. After reviewing not only the Urban Family nomination, but others in support, we just want to say at the network that Tara totally and fully embodies values and the dedication to be the changemaker for the kids of Wisconsin Public Schools. She is a parent who catapulted herself into action after a failed referendum and then dedicated herself to fighting the dissolution of your district. For her nomination, one of them called her the piper of the district. She's commitment to her district and the children of her community is a perfect example of local level action with statewide impact. Tara's one of many that are standing up for the 860,000 children in Wisconsin Public Schools. Her nominator said she never gives up, and she showed us that hard work makes change possible. The Wisconsin Public Education Network joins advocates around the state thanking Tara once again for showing that courage is contagious, and we congratulate her on being our 2020 changemaker.
Thank you, proud. Thank you.
No, good, thank you. Bye, take care.
Thank you. I just want to say that this award might have my name on it, but it should have all of our names on it because I didn't, I didn't do this. We, we did this. Our students did this. And I think our students as a whole inspired me more than anyone I've ever come across before. And that's a testament to our teachers and our staff that helped them stay strong and be confident and go through things that no one should ever have to go through. And I am just so proud to represent our district and our community on a statewide level. And I can't even tell you how many positive and amazing things I've heard from people all over the state and how inspiring you all have been. And I just feel we have so many good things ahead of us. And I just wanted to thank you all for welcoming me in as part of, part of your family. And we're gonna be here together for a very long time.
Thanks, Tara. Okay. Well, you guys try and top this. Number B, letter B. Discussion of Staff Survey Results After Plan.
You want to do it, Tara?
No, you're good.
Do you want to do, we were gonna talk about virtual learning first in the slide. Do you want to step over ahead or do you want to talk about virtual learning first?
We're gonna see if we can find a bar.
Yeah, it's totally.
All right. All right, so I want to give a little reminder. We currently have 13 students in total. That we're looking at, we care for. Okay, so we have 13 students initially that have opted into virtual learning at the end of the year. And then the middle class third grade, we have one active out. So what we're doing at this point is we're using our teacher and family to discuss sort of what virtual learning will look like, what their needs are, why they felt that they wanted to make that request. And it turned out specifically in third grade that we had a candidate that felt it was better to come for the first instruction, so we need to record it. So I would say the fifth grade, hopefully, have areas that are a little bit private. That have a significant area. So we're talking about the elementary school virtual learning plan that goes with that. The three main tenets of virtual learning that the elementary should really focus on making sure that we can provide an equitable instruction for all students, whether virtual or in person. Really paying attention to how we're providing development to the appropriate virtual interactions of learning. And then fidelity to instruction and assessment. So how we guarantee what's happening in the classroom, what's also happening online, and how we assess those students. So right now, given the numbers that are opting in, and given that it's generally not chosen per grade, with some grades having none, the plan is going to be to assign virtual students to one of the two teachers at each team level. So our members include two teachers at every grade level. So we're discussing which teachers and which not those students at that level. And then the teachers go elect or volunteer or become to discussion, who's gonna get them. They will be supported in the building by being learning of all extra building duties and receive an extra prep time so that they can be supported during the school day and have that time and intention to be able to give to students. So students may use a combination of Google Classroom, CSO, PressKits, and IXL to provide those other materials online for students and families. And then that information is going to be available to access in a manner that fits their learning and virtual learning needs. So we have kids who are opting out, they're a daycare during the day. That information is going to be available online to them afterwards. If there was someone who could help them during the day, they can certainly access it during the day. And it's sort of something that is a very fluid fit for each of the families. Online students will also be needing a learning assessment that matches classroom learning. And they will receive one water-spronged virtual instruction lessons in math reading and writing two times a week. And then generally follows what would be like the typical virtual AAV data received to make sure that students are still getting that appropriate interaction. But then that will be delivered based on the teacher's schedule, whether that be during or outside of the school day. And then we're making sure that we're sort of supporting and coordinating appropriately the support in the school. Having the numbers where they're at is definitely an asset for elementary schools, not knowing where our needs are to community goals, our sort of advocates of coming into what we could offer to our families. And I feel like what we're sitting right now, we can offer very quality virtual experience that students can access on their own time and matching the quality and structure of what's happening in the classroom.
Good question on how much earlier we're gonna, can we move on? So these are the little high school numbers. They're a little bit higher, as was kind of expected. Because we're at 30 right now, and you can see that right now by grade. There are kids in every grade at this point. I have made contact with, I would say 75% of them I've made calls to. I mean, there are back to some, and I have a handful that I have not been able to reach out to yet. But hopefully by tomorrow, I hope I've been able to at least reach out to everybody. I've been doing either in-person or virtual meetings with the parents and the students to make sure we're on the same page. You can see I can have my mom's daughter and my 12th daughter both up in the face of base morning. So I believe, if my math is right, we have 28 plus right now. And again, a lot of those families that I've not had that one-on-one conversation with, I don't know. So up here, they develop a little different. Basically, I'm working to create almost an individual plan for a kid. Obviously, six, seven, and eight, the sixth grade level will look pretty similar. Some grades, the eighth grade, they're gonna look similar to their, to their grade. But the high school kids all have their schedules. Everything is a little bit different. So I'm working to create a very individualized plan that includes kind of the following things. Those core concepts, the mathematics, science, and psychology ones. For the most part, I believe that can be done by utilizing the classes that they were given in one of them in face-to-face. So we'll use U.S. history, for example. I believe a kid in U.S. history can continue in U.S. history. We would use a combination of live streaming in the classroom. So there are days that the kids are asked to come on during the class period and either listen to a lecture or be part of an activity. Video recording, similar to what we did from our time. So a teacher may report a lesson, push it out to the kid to watch. I got a vision of Chromebook being part of a group discussion, and the kids had that conversation with Chuck Watty, but I think it has to be done to some extent. And then obviously using our Google Classroom and any other platform we can to push our work and get it back. Now, there are going to be pickups. I'll use science as a perfect example. A lab with C. barnes of his ministry probably not on its own, really, at home. So we're gonna either work to find a video way to get out, maybe people can provide some data and then we can discuss it, and maybe to record it. You know, there's gonna have to be some give and take to what exactly to infer. That's part of the reason for the time difference. You know, like nine to 18 weeks because the grading is gonna look different for a child today in virtual as opposed to a child today in face-to-face. A lot of classes are a little bit different. There are definitely some classes that require plans on participation. I'll use tech dad as an example. Again, I don't think many of you have a full shop of equipment at home. In some cases, I'm encouraged to include this. We need to look for another option. And so far, we're gonna go with finance. Or like for band, for example, I'm working with staff on what can they do at home that would allow them to transmit it back if they come back to school. Computer classes potentially, if they were doing something e-dynamic, it's the other option. A lot of them are e-dynamic, and obviously they can just continue in that at home. Or were you in that experience where a tech dad was more involved for something that they can't take face-to-face. I said Friday, I was, I waited until afternoon. I was able to make a lot of calls in an hour and a half. I was here by myself. So I can say like that's actually 75% of the families I have been able to contact. Middle school is a little bit more challenging. So I'm working on their lessons and how that will work. But the e-dynamic does have a really nice middle school platform, but has a fifth of class that has a part that has a general. So I can believe we still definitely have some of their elective as well. So that's kind of high school, middle school update. So I think we're really staffing. I don't know if you want to know, but the staff members want to ask questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So your high school students that would go the virtual route, are they eligible for athletics if we help them or?
That's a good question. At this point, I'm answering to that as a benefit that they are our students. I was asked that question by one of the six to seven parents I talked to. I don't, I haven't worked on natural I do that, but they are students. I guess it's about answer I can do. So unless, sometimes it's the board and administration feel we want to not allow them to do those things. I don't know. And who knows what's gonna happen with that at the beginning of it. So I guess that's the answer I'm giving, I think.
Okay.
I would love some guidance if you wanted to give a different answer, but then they are.
I think that makes, to me, that makes sense that there are students. I, with you, have a hard time rationalizing that. But everyone has a different perspective, so I can respect that just so that there's protections for full stripes on the situation.
And at this point, if you have one student up in the air, and they are honestly not, sometimes I want to find a lot of my effort right now.
And some country can't even do anything about it with the associations and the league that are deciding where to go.
I just felt that.
No, no, I would, I would get it. Anybody have anything else either for Katie or? We're also working, you can see there are a number of the L five or four special I did. So obviously, we're working with Katelyn to figure out how we're going to support those families outside of the unit assessment. Great job. Thank you. All right. I'm afraid of this.
Thank you.
Well, I, from here, I'd like to.
I don't think you have.
Okay. Thank you. So, the purpose is, well, this is just a survey that we ran. We'll give it to all the teachers. We see 600 responses for most of the questions. It's, this is the integration of those, of those responses. Most of them are teachers, as you can see, support staff, and it's also had a participation, custodial service. So we had a bit of participation from everywhere and a good participation from our teachers. So, and that's what we were expecting. And it gives us a good, I guess, pointers to where we're gonna be at and what we're going to find out when we open or go virtual or whatever we need to do to keep this decision safe. So we can, thank you. So do people still say that starting school face-to-face five days a week?
Aye.
That's okay. So, including mandated math. So most of them do. Some people are excited, and then some people definitely don't, don't feel safe. How we're feeling safe, I guess, for teachers, with a duty to, you know, teach your kids, as we will see in the other slides, it's pretty encouraging. So this is a question that came up, and I wanted to ask this one because would you feel, still feel safe if math work does not be mandated, but still strongly recommended? And this came up in one of our meetings. It drops down quite a bit, the confidence that people have with this environment. It's just something to keep in mind. So preference for returning to school, as you can see, it's coming back to school in person. It's their preference. By day, face-to-face, the teachers prepare the four-day face-to-face, probably because of the deep cleaning on Wednesday. Some sort of hybrid model combination was not that popular in full virtual. Also not that, you know, the first option that people would go with. Would you agree to a setting where the most students are physically present, but then virtual students can also join the school? You know, with math, there's Chromebooks or Beats or whatever. And so we have a good amount of people saying yes, and then a small portion that says no. And of course, there's logistics, there's downs, and maybe this may not work perfectly. But you know, it's not as many people that are against it as we thought. Those no's are pretty, not that big. This is pointer, a pointer to virtual presence of students and a mixed classroom is workable, at least in their minds. Are they returning to school if we have five days, you know, face-to-face instruction? Yes. I mean, this is, I think, a, yes, we only had, this is, this, this liberal of no is one person. One of the response, so. So not being sure, it's still, you know, I would still see it as a positive or they could, they're still thinking of coming. They're just, you know, they want to see the conditions. And perhaps they don't feel entirely okay with saying yes. Work if we're fully virtual? Yes. So this tells us that in any environment that we need to be in, they're gonna be there for us. Teachers are gonna be there for us. So, and that's, that's, you know, commendable of them to be able to do this, make the decisions. The same thing for face-to-face. It's basically the same. Congress staff concerns, and I wanted to address these. Why are you not looking at using Palmyra Elementary School to spread out the kids at younger grades? I think, well, this is more a question that Katie could answer, but I think the question was that we were thinking of opening Palmyra. It is an option that we have, but Katie.
So at the same, with the Eagle Elementary, we have the availability of three additional classrooms that's needed to separate the classes well. Right now, our enrollment is only at 192 and 44 back in the day. So that means that our other areas are not as close to Eagle regarding. And so we're able to keep ratios really low, and then enable additional classrooms if we need to. We are able to do real students, spread students out so that the kids who are living together, that are playing together, that are meeting together. Now, we're happily getting a very large influx of kid material included, and that isn't to be examined, or right now, it's just not something that we need.
I think there are also logistical concerns that we talked about before with climate resumption and sways and launch in the third building, staff-wise, I think we would be stretching it out pretty thin. Katie, they can go to the one building right now. I think that makes the most sense for a lot of those people.
Yeah, probably makes things harder. So it's just to address that we did, we did think about it. We, we, we're just, I mean, we're hearing you, and yes, it's a part of the plan with that. The, some of the comments were, we need more disinfecting machines to properly disinfect our buildings. We are considering purchasing a, 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 a machine that is ionization. It kills pretty much anything. There is a virus or bacteria that's around there. So, and just to be able, we're considering buying another one and some handheld ones to be able to just really disinfect the entire circle areas of the school, all our schools. We need to know what the protocol will be when a positive case occurs among students, staff, and the families. We have Pam, which, she's probably not gonna be able to tell us exactly everything of how this works, but I think she can help us with that too, right? But would you like to, at this point, say something or maybe wait a little bit?
What, why are you waiting?
Okay, sure. So, I cannot wear a face mask. Are there any options? Well, yes, we have shields. We have different other options that we could think of. And of course, we can talk about the different accommodations that you may need. And this is not like, oh my God, you don't wear a face mask, you need to leave. We're going to consider everyone's individual situation. Will temperature checks occur before students that can enter the building? It can be done at home, but according to our lawyers and other advisors, because of KIPA, this is to protect the student medical records and, you know, their privacy. We cannot be taking temperature measures when they're entering the school. So there's going to be a whole, do you want to talk more about the whole survey that we're?
So we have a self-different screener that's available for parents that will have a lineaded card to make sure that they're going through, you know, the different full practices that need to be done with COVID. Obviously, we can't compel people to do that. Like the regular saying, from a legal standpoint, asking a child to engage in a medical procedure preemptively without an adult makes it a medical procedure, and they can't consent to that. Now, since we're, we absolutely can address us individually when they get to school. We have, we have areas for isolation rooms for kids experiencing symptoms. But we're really, you know, counting on parents to help us stay open by really doing their part to keep kids home. Um, and also, you know, it's, it's frustrating as it is, you know, a lot of parents complain, we'll give time to all those kids in the morning, and then that fever's not gonna show. Um, so it would, we basically want to review point of that's gonna really slow down, you know, our lives at school. It's gonna jam on some areas, we have more COVID for kids, so we really wanna make sure that parents are screening at home, um, and we're not doing that when they come to school.
So really need to trust the community and count on them to basically help us keep this out of the school. What fires. So if a teacher cannot teach in the physical classroom due to the health concerns or their health and immunity compromise, what are the teaching options in the school district for that teacher? We're analyzing the possibility of, of people teaching from online and then having, uh, some form of assistance in the classroom, physical presence. So they can do these kinds of things without having to, you know, have their job depend on it. Uh, still, we're still talking about it, still in progress. We're developing it also with the tech committee. We're starting a tech committee, uh, very soon to be able to address these issues and be able to figure out how to do this better. There was a comment, this is a comment, this is like a, a good comment. Uh, so they, they don't have any concerns, uh, because they, the board, are already doing, uh, trying to do what's best for EASD, and, and that's all we should ask. So that's, uh, just some confidence from the staff on your guys.
That was nice, we didn't hear you. Yeah, so.
They thought a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot. So, thank you very much. Uh, any questions, please?
Sweet, sweet. So Pam, here, Pam Strike, we're from, we're one of the local people who, who, with Governor Comey, um, is here to talk a little bit about the things to do if we want to.
Yeah, yeah, well, she was gonna handle that most question, right?
Well, you all forwarded what is the guiding document from Jefferson County.
Yes, your name.
So that did not hit the public, so all these public people up here have not seen that document. Um, so Pam, from Congress, we can give you a little bit of advice on that document and whatever other wonderful things you want from them.
So hi, I'm Strike. Uh, until six weeks ago, I was the district administrator for Lake Mills, so I was hot, 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 and all of this with you. And, um, at that time, I was talking to the health department all of the time, just like you guys had been. And as my retirement was coming forward, I said, is there anything I can do to help? And within forty-five minutes, the county board in the evening approved, uh, me coming in. My task is simply to be a resource for schools, and that's public schools and private schools in Jefferson County. So, you know, it's about thirty different schools, thirty-five schools. And I take people's concerns and questions, and I get the answers, and I try to get the answers back to people as soon as possible. And what that means is seven days a week, forty-four hours a day. I have people calling me in the middle of the night, superintendents, I can't sleep, talk to me. Then the next step that the county did besides hiring me was to bring in a full-time epidemiologist. And I don't know if you can appreciate this in this crazy time, but to find a full-time epidemiologist that just received Jefferson County, just small world, you know, county, this whole country is amazing. His name is Sam Rose, and he and I talk about seventy-five times a day. He is, in fact, I was just texting him when I heard something coming up here. We already got the, the information, so I'm sure. He is the person that wrote the reopening document that you received in your board meeting. I am not a health, I'm not a public health person, I'm not even a health department person, really, but I, I think this is my eighth or tenth board meeting in the last three weeks. So I heard all of the information and I'm very excited. So that's, that's the best that I can do for you tonight. So, um, within that document, so I can, for me to talk about those metrics a little bit?
Okay.
Within that document that you received, there's a couple key elements about when to go from face-to-face to virtual. And the number one thing, um, that we will look at is the positive rate for the county. Okay, and for Jefferson County. You guys get more complicated with our county, and we can talk about that in a couple minutes. But we chose, Sam Rose chose, after, you know, searching the country and looking at demographics more similar to our county than others, a rate of eight percent positivity. So if all the tests gone over a fourteen-day period, what is the positive rate? If it should reach eight percent, huge red flag, okay? You're gonna hear five percent in some places, uh, for New York City is three percent. Okay, so what I've learned, because now I'm an amateur epidemiologist also, is that in very dense urban areas, three percent is a huge red flag. Five percent, we should really be concerned. But eight, eight percent seems to reflect an area like ours that involves a lot of rural areas. Okay, it has to do with the density of the population, hours of the population, uh, process paths and, and, uh, those constraints. Sam Rose wrote that plan over a week ago, but we held it because we believe that the Department of Health Services for St. Louis is going to come out with Avery as well. And we waited, and we waited, and we waited, and we still haven't been listed. So Monday morning, about six o'clock, Ed Meyer, the county executive, and I were chatting, and we're like, these schools need a benchmark. And so he okayed releasing these numbers for us. So what you see is out of the press, as of ten o'clock yesterday morning. With St. Louis Department, may say something different, and then we'll adjust our plan based on that. Another red flag, or something that we wanna watch for, is community spread. Community spread means that, um, a percentage of cases that they can't find the source of where the person got the infection. The positivity rate is set to sixty percent. As of yesterday, I heard Jefferson County was about forty percent. Okay, so forty percent of the cases, the contact tracers could not identify where they picked it up. So we've got some play there. But there are other factors that go into when the county recommends switching to virtual or if you're in virtual, become that. They include things like the hospitalization rates, if the trend line, the trajectory is going up or down. There's a lot of factors. And at this point, I should also remind you that Jefferson County does not have the authority to close out the school. They only have the authority to recommend and provide guidelines. Okay, that's different than Dean County. It's different than St. Louis County. In Jefferson County, they probably recommend. So, out of the press, uh, I just got that number. If, if you're following these numbers, um, you go to the Jefferson County COVID dashboard. I don't know if you guys, and I checked that a couple times a day, but, um, that's, that's the number. If you look there right now, it has one chart about positivity, and on the bottom, it has a seven-day average. And I believe that says eight point five. So that, so, but I, I want you to pause because we don't go by seven days, we go by fourteen days. Okay, so I asked Sam Rose, and we just calculated the fourteen-day for Jefferson County right now at this COVID, six point five nine percent. Okay, that did go up from yesterday, but, um, it is still below that threshold at this time. Okay, so those are some things that people are really waiting for our plan of recommendations to see. Within that plan, you will also see what happens with so much positivity, okay? So for example, if a staff member or student exhibits symptoms, obviously, they're gonna move to school right away. I don't know if any of you have been in this situation. Unfortunately, in my family, we've had ten positive people, I've been through this several times, I, I've lived this craziness. If you have a symptom, not just a headache, uh, but any of the other symptoms, um, we're gonna ask that, that person or that family, call their medical doctor. Hopefully, their medical doctor will, uh, uh, order a test, and that test would probably be done yet that day. Then it takes about twenty-four to forty-eight hours to get those results. Okay, so that person, obviously, stays out, um, symptoms, you watch it for three days, um, and the symptoms continue, they stay out for fourteen. If the person should test positively, then we'll begin this complicated process, or maybe not so much, depending on how this plays out in schools, uh, quarantining people who have been exposed to that risk. And that is gonna be handled by, um, a Jefferson County contact tracer, but probably facilitated by your staff. So I, I've asked every school district to give me their main contact, I've created that list, um, that will go straight to the county. And there's a really good chance I might show up to, just because it's gonna be all hands on deck to help you figure out who needs support. And then again, there's a number in that guide of three in a school. If three in a school, three cases in a school within a week, the county might say, hey, we better, we better shut this place off for three days. That allows one, one day for the school to settle, for the air and the particles to come and to land down, and then to do that intense cleaning, and then we talk about, um, next steps, and then. This is gonna be fluid, this is gonna be a conversation, it's not, acts happens immediately, you know, this follows. Because, uh, there's such a wide variety of things. And the reason that we know that is because the Watertown School District had some students. And they invited two hundred kids in, and they had just a whole host of different kinds of situations arise. That has really given us pause to think about all the permutations of what could happen. You know, a little kid comes in and says, hey, my daddy must gotta stay home, because somebody in the office is sick. You know, does that mean anybody else has to stay home? No, but we all know that the rumor mill will, will start, and other kids will hear that and go home. So there's all kinds of different things that we'll talk about. And what I really wanted, uh, Pam here tonight to say is that I have, um, in the last six weeks, I'm so impressed with Jefferson County. The fact that they brought me in, um, that they saw a need for schools to get extra support, and that they had hired Sam Rose, and all the stuff that they're doing in the background to support schools. It's a super high priority for, um, them, as the county executive and the board. So I guess the message is, we're here to help, and I hope these guys have felt this already since we, we brought them in. You know, we are, um, like I said, accessible at any time, or any questions, and to talk through in the situation. Sam Rose is, um, a public health person, public policy, scientific epidemiologist. So he really understands the need to, um, understand the culture of the community and the needs of the community, and that's why I'm going to the school board, so I can appeal it, and I can hear your questions and concerns, and then I really get to the things that this will do. So, and the family, questions?
I just have one now.
Yes.
Could you explain what positive rate means?
Yes, positive rate is determined every single day. It is the number of tests that have been done in Jefferson County or on a person from Jefferson County, and what percent of those people were positive. So, um, in my family's situation, we need to be tested. We were, uh, some of the people in my family are asymptomatic, no doctor would do that test. My family went to Madisonville Energy Center. Based on our zip code, those numbers came back telling us. So when you look at the dashboard, um, this is another thing that Jefferson County's doing very, very well. They hold the data for twenty-four hours, so it's accurate. Some of the other counties around us aren't that stacked as well, there might be a five-day delay in those positive rates. Or, you know, just the, the sheer act of putting those test results into the CDC. So, um, those, uh, numbers are recorded on that, actually. Any other questions, that's?
Any questions for Pam?
How does this work, work happening, or sorry, during the catalog show?
Well, again, um, Sam Rose figured out, um, by talking to Washington State and the CTC, uh, uh, office, national office, that what we could do for you, and he's willing to do for you, is to contact Waukesha County. Are you just in Waukesha, Jefferson?
A little, a little.
A little tiny bit of Waukesha.
A little, like, a little TV head for the wall.
Okay, that's good, because we're already connected with Waukesha now. So you will, we will have you take the popu-, your student population, figure out what percentage are in each county. He will collect the data from each of the counties, and he will tabulate what the ratios.
Have you been on the Waukesha County dashboard? They actually do the county in different colors, like, actually, we get the eagle with the thousands and thousands of information, so. Like, the Waukesha, we'll go there, and it's a different shade of red, which I think is not good compared to where, where, like, the eagle area is, so. Again, that's not the numbers that Sam Rose is gonna look at, but at least when I looked at it, I thought that was nice, and it was appropriate on my region, because parts of Waukesha County were very different than other parts of Waukesha County.
Well, and you have the diversity, it's, you have the inner city of Waukesha, and then you have the very rural Waukesha, so.
And that's why these are guidelines, and that's why there'll be a conversation. And I, I wanna be really clear about that, because some of the principals have talked to me from some, especially some of the parochial schools that are tiny, like, with twenty-five kids. And they're like, do we really have to shut down if, if that, that red flag number of eight percent happens? No, but we have to be in conversation and, and look at what, what's the reality for your group of families. And so that'll be really important in this area, so that you guys, that's Whitewater, and then that's also Cambridge, which is in King County.
So, can I just say?
Did you put something there? That is, uh, according to the lawyers, yes, there are guidelines, yes, there are suggestions, but liability wise, we need to follow. If we want to stay here.
And that's actually exactly what I was gonna say, was that our lawyers have advised us that you're to treat this as a mandate rather than a basic judgment.
Yes.
Yeah. So that was from how to control. Right, I was, I was, I was superintendent six weeks ago. And you, I, I had to lie to the leaders, so. You are always told to start with your health department, talk to your lawyers, talk to your insurance. What I've learned, now that I'm behind the curtain in the health department, is I think they forgot to tell the health department. So the health department got flooded with all of these, I mean, I was writing the rent plans, so the recreation in my community, I was writing, uh, graduation plans, sending it to the county, like, why are you sending us all of this? I'm like, that's hard, what yours, and our insurance told us we had from the state of Wisconsin. You got that figured out. We're all, we're all, we're all the same, so that's totally good.
So my, my question here is, is one of the concerns during the survey was about the transparency of, uh, the reporting that comes in. And, you know, as you mentioned, we'll have to be flexible, because who knows what's gonna happen next? So what's the plan to communicate the new plan?
Our plan and their plan?
Anybody's plan, I mean, because things are gonna change, right? Not a dime, and so.
Well, we can say that we're going to be flexible, that we were going to follow, uh, guidelines, the guidelines, uh, for the CDC, uh, because basically we have to, uh, according to our lawyers, and it, it makes sense for the kids to be safe. We don't want to have, you know, the first accident or COVID accident in, in our building. So, but it, obviously, it's, uh, also up to you as a board to decide whether we want to revise our plan or the one we have right now, which includes following guidelines and, and, uh, acting upon them, upon the recommendations, uh, that's, that's what we, would, you know, how much are we going to differ from that? I would like to, uh, see if, if you even want to question that.
I was gonna say, so are you also talking about, like, the physical, how this is gonna go down, so if we hit that magic eight percent number? Um, so that's an interesting, too, because of the discussion, and so, you know, if we hit that, that magic eight percent, um, and Jefferson County reached out to us and said, hey, this is where members are, um, how are we making that decision as a district and as a team? Are we, are we convening when that magic eight percent hits, and we're all coming together to decide? Is it just, you know, we're going to, you know, might have to call up everybody and say we get eight percent? You know, what are, what, you know, like, if we made this agreement, how that, that protocol happens?
That's a local, that's a local decision. As far as dispersing the plan, um, I know that, um, other school districts are set. As far as dispersing the plan, um, I know that, um, other school districts are sending that document out in its entirety to staff and parents immediately. Um, tomorrow morning, there's going to be a press release about it, and, and, uh, the newspaper's interviewing Sam Rose and Neil Scott from the health department, although we will get the Jefferson County union tomorrow. You know, the other thing that Sam Rose says, and is that, this, this won't happen like this, I mean, it, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a giant surprise, if, you know, that number is inching up right now. I don't know if any of you, uh, saw it, but, um, Dr. Foci, uh, had an interview over the weekend with Brown University, say YouTube, I would highly recommend that you watch it, because it gave me a lot of hope. It talked about, um, the realities of this infection, and it gave the realities of, um, why the, um, there would be a vaccine for this, and in there, he said, remember that when you're watching data, you're looking at behaviors from two weeks ago, okay? And when they analyze the data, they see that numbers like ours that are inching up every day, increasing a little bit. If you don't intervene, that's going to continue. But we did intervene. In our last two-week period, there was the, the face cover event. That is an action that should interrupt that slowly creeping up trajectory. So, I'm very hopeful that those numbers are going to come down, and we can see that. And the reason that we use 14 days is because, um, you know, maybe Mondays is a great game of people who go in to test, maybe it's Saturday, maybe it's Sunday, I don't know those kinds of things, but you level out people's availability for testing by using that 14-day average. So, I mean, there, there's great science and statistics be- behind the whole thing, but Sam Rose has told us, is this is not going to, um, you know, just hit us one day, we have to decide right away. You're going to know if you have a case in your school. You're going to know because a child or a staff member has gone home with some pretty convincing, um, symptom, or they're calling in that they're not coming in because of symptoms. So, your school nurse is going to get something like that, something's in the harbor. I mean, I, I, I think that that was, uh, I think that's just a little bit of reality that's, that, that helped us all, uh, and, so...
Can you remind me, what are the recommendations for, how long it should be, below waiting interval when we return? Is that a next?
14 days.
14 days. Below wait before we return?
Yes. That is one, that is one...
Cycle.
Cycle, right. And I learned that two cycles, or 28 days in this case, is when a outbreak is considered over.
Um, do you have any experiences to share from the Watertown summer school, um, event? You know, when you talk about, about all the children's symptoms, there are a lot of things that our younger students sort of just kind of come to the office and go, I think, I, you know, rather than sending every student who's under the age of, like, six home every day, um, what sort of giving, experience or value from that perspective?
And Pam shared a lot about Watertown, because Watertown has its own health department. So, they actually operate as a separate entity outside the Jefferson Health Department. So, I just heard Pam's building, those exact things. Um, and that's why, um, I mentioned earlier, it doesn't appear that a headache is, uh, a headache alone is not, um, something that will be a doctor's office to push out of tests. Not in there.
Yeah.
You know, I'm commenting, are you the one that... Take all of your, you know, the, the ones that...